Commissioner Bertollio.
Here.
Commissioner Chadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Here.
Commissioner Milne.
Here.
Chairman Hendry.
Here.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Regarding Resolution B, there is still a few line items in the COVID relief grant application that needs to be filled in.
Okay.
So the numbers reflected in the resolution are not exact at this point, but the body of the agreement is in a form that, once we get those numbers, that the grant can be submitted.
Okay, everybody understand that? Okay, other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next we have public hearings. These hearings, both of them, we've got two of them, they'll be conducted in accordance with state statute, rules of Neptuna County Commission, and other applicable laws. I would ask any individuals that would like to address the commission to approach the lectern and give your full name and address so we can have that on the record. Okay, first we have a variance request. Is there a report from staff?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, BC 20-2 is a variance request to the minimum lot size in the Urban Agricultural Zoning District, an application by Ryan Ford on behalf of David and Allison McNulty. Location and zoning, the subject parcel is located at the intersection of Emberg Road and 33 Mile Road. The subject property and all surrounding properties are zoned urban ag. So this is west of Casper, we head out on 2026, we go past the airport, we take the next right onto 33 Mile Road, we head north on 33 Mile Road, oh, it looks to be about a little over three miles, and we're on the west side of the road. As you can see here, it's all urban ag zoning. The background, the McNulty's own a 10-acre parcel of land that has been segregated by Emberg Road, this is right at the intersection of Emberg and 33 Mile Road. As it is constructed, Emberg Road lies further north than it was originally intended, effectively removing about 1.04 acres from the main parcel. The McNulty's would like to sell this 1.04 acre land to the adjacent property owner, the Biggs, and grant a new right-of-way easement to Neptuna County for Emberg Road. So you can see here, again, we're at the intersection of Emberg Road and 33 in the red circled area, you can see Emberg Road jogs to the north. Here's an aerial, you can see here how far to the north Emberg Road was actually built. So Emberg Road was built out of its right-of-ways, thus causing further confusion when, to the south there, you'll actually see there's a building that's built across the property line. They believed that was their property, they measured so many feet off of the edge of Emberg Road, and so now we have an encroachment. So as a little more further background, there was some civil action between the two parties, Neptuna County was brought into that because of Emberg Road, and they've come to agreements on that pending a variance approval. The McNulty's would sell that land to the Biggs, and you'll see in our further presentation, staff is supportive of this for all the findings of fact in the presentation, and contingent that the Biggs would incorporate this one acre into their existing property. So we would not have this little sliver of property out there or a separate lot, that's actually going to get incorporated into the larger parcel to the south. This is looking west down Emberg Road. Part of that action too is we, Neptuna County will be granted a proper right-of-way for Emberg Road where it is currently built, so that'll be taken care of also. This is looking west down Emberg Road. This is looking east, again, you can see the jog in the road there where it goes to the north. So criteria for variance, when acting upon a variance, the board shall be guided by the intent and purpose as well as the goals and policies of all the zoning resolution. In addition, the board shall require showings concerning all seven of the following, and I won't read each one of them, but I am going to read the findings of fact. Item number one, are there exceptional or extraordinary circumstances and conditions applicable to the property involved in the literal interpretation of this resolution to the applicant's property result in an unnecessary hardship? Staff's proposed finding the fact, the location of Emberg Road does create a hardship, creating a separation of an already awkward-shaped parcel. If you saw that 10-acre parcel is a very narrow but long strip, so when Emberg Road cuts in there, it really makes that one acre effectively unusable. The 1.04 acres to the south of the constructed road could not be developed with current setbacks in the Urban Agricultural Zoning District, granting the variance would allow the Biggs to incorporate this 1.04 acre parcel into their land. Is the hardship due to unique circumstances? Staff's proposed finding the fact, the road was constructed outside of the parameters of the road right-of-way, this is a unique circumstance for the landowners. Three, will the variance authorize a use other than those specified listed? Staff's proposed finding the fact, this variance is for a minimum lot size, not for use, no other use would be authorized by this variance. So remember, urban ag is a 10-acre minimum, so we're going to be underneath 10 acres by that 1.04 acres. Will the variance result in a gain of use, service, or income greater in extent that's available to the other landowners? Staff's proposed finding the fact, there'll be a positive gain in use for the applicant and the adjacent landowner, allowing them to use their land as landowners in the vicinity have. There'll be no gain in services or income. Five, will granting the variance merely serve as a convenience for the necessary for the proven hardship? The staff's proposed finding the fact, several hardships would be alleviated, the 1.04 parcel would be sold to Biggs, Emberg Road would be within its own right-of-way, and the McNulty's can start to use their property with accurate property lines. Will granting the variance impair the use of adjacent property alter the character of the neighborhood? Staff's proposed finding the fact, the variance would not impair the use of adjacent properties or character of the neighborhood. And finally, seven, will granting the variance detrimentally affect public health, safety, and welfare or nullify the intent and purpose of the development plan or the zoning resolution? Staff's proposed finding the fact, the approval of the variance will not have effect to the public health, safety, or welfare of the public, the variance will benefit Emberg Road by having it into conformity with the new right-of-way that will be granted. So it will help get the road within an established right-of-way, it'll help the McNulty's, and it'll also help the Biggs who have that building that's now straddling the property lines. Public comment, to date, Neptuna County has received no comments to this agenda item. Staff sent notices to four adjacent property owners. Proposed motion, at their August 10, 2020 meeting, the Planning Commission recommend approval of this agenda item by the Board of County Commissioners with the following conditions. Upon completion of the 1.04 acre sale, the Biggs shall merge the 1.04 acre parcel into their existing parcel, and two, the existing road easement shall be vacated. Staff also recommends all findings of fact set forth in this report in this public hearing be incorporated into the motion. With that, I'd answer any questions the commission may have.
Any questions? What's that going to end up, the county road easement, how wide is that?
I would look at, need to look it up, but I believe it's a 60-foot.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. I'll now open the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I am Keith Nakbar, I am the attorney for Dan and Ann Biggs, who are the neighbors to the south of Engberg Road. We would ask for approval of the request for a variance. The, as Mr. Gutierrez mentioned, a civil case led to the discovery of the road issue, and the conveyance that is proposed here with the approval of the variance would make of record that which seems to be the case on the ground at the subject property. As Mr. Gutierrez said, Engberg Road is not in its record platted location, it is actually encroaching on the private land of McNulty. Engberg Road, if you look at the description of Engberg Road, it actually is supposed to be down right along that section line, that is the line that goes right through the building there. This problem, the fact that Engberg Road is not located where it is supposed to be located, creates a fractured parcel for the McNulty's and a parcel of 1.04 acres between the Biggs' property and Engberg Road. Someone looking at the site on the ground out there would never know that the situation exists as it does in the record, and this request for a variance will actually solve a number of problems, it'll solve the problem for the Biggs with their building, it'll solve the problem for the county with having Engberg Road on land that is not dedicated as a public roadway, it's outside of its right-of-way. The sale that is proposed, contingent upon approval of the variance, would eliminate, it actually does three things, it eliminates the need for the county to move Engberg Road's physical location into its proper right-of-way, because as a part of the resolution of this matter, McNulty's have agreed to grant the county a right-of-way for Engberg Road. It also eliminates the severed parcel for the McNulty's and eliminates the strip of land owned by the McNulty's between the Biggs' property and Engberg Road, because contingent on the approval of this variance, Biggs will then own all the way up to the southern boundary of Engberg Road. So that little parcel between Engberg Road and the line, the section line which runs right through the middle of the building would become Biggs' property. This also, as Mr. Gutierrez suggested, makes it conducive, more conducive for both parties to maximize the benefit of and productivity of their land. And as I said, nothing on site will actually change, no use of the land will be any different, it doesn't allow anything that's not already allowed in the existing zoning. And so we would ask, on behalf of Dan and Ann Biggs, that you approve the variance as recommended by the Planning Commission, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? I guess I've got one. Was there any title policies that pointed that out?
No.
Curious.
No, because this is an encroachment that is not reflected, well, I'm not sure how I want to answer that. Title insurance did not take care of the problem.
Well, and it, yeah, and it didn't, did it bring the problem to life?
Title insurance did not.
It didn't?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? I guess.
Mr. Chairman, as a point of clarification, you'd asked about the Emberg Road.
I saw it on this one.
So it's 66 feet wide is what we would be getting granted in this realignment.
Yeah, mine looks like 65, but yeah, I did see a better picture in there, thank you. Come on up.
Appreciate your time this evening. Ryan Ford with Williams Porter Day in the Ville, 159 North Walcott, Suite 400. Chairman Hendry, to just answer your question a little bit more, that building that was put up was actually put up prior to Mr. and Mrs. McNulty purchasing the property.
Oh, yeah.
And so eventually, title insurance did pick it up and say it was going to be an exclusion, it didn't necessarily bring the problem to light at the time of the property itself, McNulty's property has had an unfortunate past, it was subject to an IRS foreclosure sale, which is how it came to be in Mr. McNulty's possession. But we are in favor of this application, we do want to extend our thanks and appreciation to Mr. Nelson and Mr. Hagler for being very involved with us in this process, they were very instrumental in helping the parties come together and find a workable solution for this that works for the McNulty's, for the Biggs, and we believe offers a very feasible solution to the county to get Engberg Road finally straightened out.
Great, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So since Mr. Hagler isn't present, I would just echo the comments from council. Mr. Hagler and I were involved on behalf of the county due to the effect on Engberg Road, we, county was not a party to any of the, any litigation, but as an affected third party, we're involved, and Mr. Hagler and I are both highly supportive of this application.
Yeah, we've got several roads I know around the county that are not on the line, this is one that brings that to light. Okay. Anyone else wishing, or anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Is there?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the variance of UC 20-2 with staff's recommendations of conditions and finding of facts.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Other discussion?
What are you looking at me for?
This side's on a roll.
I'm just grinning.
You guys better get going.
I'm just grinning.
Other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next, we have a text amendment, number 20-1, is there a report? Thanks, everybody, for being here, if you're.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the text amendment 20-1 is a text amendment to our 2000 zoning resolution, an application by the Planning Department. Background, currently, the zoning resolution does not contain regulations for utility-scale solar energy systems. With the construction and electrical requirements for safety purposes, the staff of Neptuna County Development would like to implement these regulations to allow an option to choose a cleaner, renewable, and non-polluting energy source. On January 7, 2020, the Board of County Commissioners approved Resolution 0120 implementing emergency regulations related to utility-scale solar energy systems. The emergency regulations were extended and are now set to expire September 3, 2020. So it was through emergency regulations that we were able to put the original ones in, we'll get into it in subsequent slides, but we had looked to our neighbors around the state that had some solar regulations on the books, we had got those, reworked them for us, and we put them into use. We're only allowed to extend those once to September 3, and then that's the reason why we're before you tonight, is we are now proposing the permanent adoption of these rules. The board recently approved an application for Dynosolar to install a utility-scale solar system on a parcel of land north of town. During this application, staff worked to actively review the emergency regulations and how they were applied, what worked and what did not work. One major finding was the setbacks from residential district did not work. Originally, remember, we had gone with 1.25 miles, and the applicant at that point said that was an undue hardship and actually applied for a variance and was able to prove that that was a hardship. When we looked around, we did find that that was an extreme application of rules, and so you'll see here, as we get into furthermore slides, we've backed those setbacks down. Also, what happened in the meantime is there's legislative changes that became effective July 1, 2020. Most of the additional requirements are from incorporating these regulations into the amendment. So the proposal is to incorporate utility-scale solar systems as Chapter 7, Section 21 of our zoning resolution. Changes include requiring evidence of compliance with any applicable FAA, FCC, and industrial siting rules and regulations, reduce the 1.25 mile setback to residential district to 500 feet. So if we have a residential zoning district where the primary intent and purpose is residence, they can, we're proposing they would go down to 500 feet for that. The second one is add a setback of 150 feet from existing residences not within a residential zoning district. So if we have a residence within light industrial, heavy industrial, any of these zoning districts that aren't residential in purpose, staff is proposing that we go down to as close as 150 feet. That was a point of contention during planning and zoning, planning and zoning commissioners felt like we should be consistent, it should be 500 and 500. So that'll be a decision we've forwarded for you guys for consideration. Staff is recommending the 150 feet, Planning Commission recommended the 300 feet. I would say that from a state statute standpoint, they would allow you to go down to the zoning district's minimum setback, so you could go clear down to maybe 10 feet by state statute. So we are more restrictive than state statute in that regard.
Did you have something to add?
Mr. Chairman, I just did have a question of clarification, we're talking about the setback, Jason, are we talking from the actual solar installation or from the boundary of the solar farm?
So it would be the solar installation. Changes continue to require the applicant to provide written notice to all landowners within one mile and cities and towns within 20 miles of the application, that's a state statute requirement. Legal access requirements, public hearing requirements, and additional fees. The fees for solar installations, that Dynosolar, staff spent an enormous amount of time to process that application, and that was a $300 application. So we've offered to modify that, and in the future, you're going to see a revised fee schedule for the entire Planning Department. The other one that came up at planning and zoning that you'll see in your packet is bonding. So of course, we already had language in there that required decommissioning bonding. There was great debate at planning and zoning, they recommended that we would also require a construction bond during construction, and mainly as it relates to blowing dirt. There was a concern that if somebody was building a solar farm and they disturbed enough soil and we ended up with a drought year and some wind, that we could have some wind erosion, and so Planning Commission recommended that the solar installations also be bonded from a wind erosion standpoint. The City of Casper has similar regulations set up for subdivision construction, you can imagine if you're building a subdivision on the fringe of a town, we get wind erosion and then we lose landscaping and cause property damage to folks. So that was suggested by planning and zoning. So those are really the two questions before us tonight, change-wise, is the 150 feet versus the 300 feet?
500.
500, excuse me, correct? And then the bonding discussion on wind erosion. Otherwise, we've made a few legal adjustments, the ands and the those throughout the document. We've already tried it through Dynosolar, and it was really just the setbacks was the main point we needed to address, and we believe we've done that. Public comment, there have been no public comments received on this amendment. At their August 10, 2020 meeting, the Planning Commission recommend approval of this agenda items with the modifications. So with that, I'd answer any questions the commission may have.
Any questions? Yes.
So what, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So what was the biggest difference that came out of the Planning and Zoning Commission and why they don't support the 150 feet when staff does? Can you walk us through that a little bit?
So they felt like it should be consistent, consistent across the board, 500 feet, 500 feet, they wanted it consistent, they didn't want, you know, the other example, I guess, would be if I was living in urban ag or RAM zoning district, and I built my home 10 feet off the property line, which would be allowed, and my neighbor then entered into a solar farm conversation, because my zoning as urban ag or RAM was not residential as a primary use, that solar farm then could encroach up to 150 feet of my home. Whereas if I was in a residential zoning district like the Wardwell area with Dynosolar, they were afforded a 500-foot setback. So there was just a consistency conversation, and they even offered, well, if we went 500 and 500 and it created a hardship, they always had the opportunity to request variance to lessen that down to something less than 500. So I don't, did that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, thank you, I got the consistency piece, but I was curious if there was something else. Thank you.
It was really about, you know, staff wants to protect a zoning district that's set up just for residential zoning, that's the intent and purpose of rural residential or urban mixed residential, those are just for residents, where the other ones, the primary use is commercial agricultural or mining, or, you know, RAM, ranching agricultural and mining, so little different purposes.
Other questions? Commissioner Milne.
Jason, I don't really remember, we had a bunch of stipulations with Dynosolar about their construction, but we didn't have a construction bond, did we?
We did not, not on the wind erosion, and the wind erosion actually came up at planning and zoning with Dynosolar too, the concern was them being upwind of residential districts, and Dynosolar offered at that point, they were not going to disturb large areas of ground, and that particular site was relatively flat, so they didn't feel they were going to have to do a bunch of grading as it was, so that was the way they had approached it. You know, I can tell you from experience working in this community that it does get pretty sketchy when you open up a several-acre patch and we get into one of these dry spells like we are now, where we're way down on moisture, and that wind comes up and you just can't keep enough water trucks rolling on it, so just another layer of protection.
Other question? On the decommissioning, as part of the decommissioning, and I think of the towers too, they're supposed to have a plan, and these are all recyclable, I guess, but they don't recycle them, they end up putting them in landfills. So we don't talk anything about that, do we?
No, they have to provide us with a decommissioning plan, and then we get financial surety based upon a cost that's generated by, evaluated by a professional engineer, and they have to provide us that bonding to make sure that that project gets decommissioned properly, but we really don't get into that level of regulation.
Okay, and then another question, on the 500-foot setback, I remember a building on a motorcycle track out there. How far was that ended up away from the, do you remember?
It was a ways, I can look that up, I want to say it was in excess of 1,000 feet.
Yeah.
And that was not a permitted residence, that was a permitted storage building.
And I know they had concern about their building being so close, but it wasn't really a house.
Right.
But it would have even fell with, outside the 500-foot.
And, you know, what we found with Dynosolar was, they were very sensitive to the surrounding neighbor's needs, and they were absolutely reaching out to that neighbor, trying to see what agreements they could come to to make it work, that's not to say every company would do that, but that's what we found with Dynosolar.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Chadwick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so Dynosolar was okay with the 500 or, and the 150, or either way?
Dynosolar just wanted it to be less than the mile and a quarter, I believe we were down to a mile was where they were asking, and then we approved it at less than that ultimately, and so they would be in support of the 500 or the 150.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Milne.
Jason, the, reflecting at your distances, at this point, after that meeting with the 500-feet standardization, what staff's feeling at this point? Are you in supportive of the 500? 500, 500, or are you still supportive of 500, 150?
Uh, we'd be supportive of the 500, 150. You know, we can, we can appreciate the, the consistency if we want to do 500, 500. You know, we could, our, 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 our ask is 150, but if we want to go 500, it's, we would be supportive of that ultimately at the end, too.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Okay, thank you. To open the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. I was going to say something, but I won't. Is there a motion? Commissioner Kaufman?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion to approve TA 20 dash one to include the finding of facts from staff, but to have the setbacks be consistent, 500, 500.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, do we have to include the, the wind erosion in that, or?
It's in there with the finding of fact, I think.
Well, that was staff's, but the... Staff would, let's include a, a friendly amendment that would also address requiring or not requiring a wind erosion bond during construction.
So I will include a friendly amendment for a wind erosion bond in my motion. I will accept.
Hey, you'll accept that. Will the second accept that?
I accept.
Okay, that was easy enough. Any other discussion?
Um, Mr. Chairman, should we, should we place an amount on that, or just leave that wide open at this moment?
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I would certainly defer to Jason, but I think that by not specifying an amount gives staff in the county some flexibility to consult with engineers and, and derive what we would, you know, deem an appropriate amount. And, and so I think it would be difficult to set a specific amount, not knowing the scope of the project.
Okay. I would tell the Commission that I did have a phone call from a, an attorney's office, said there was a oil company that wanted to put a solar farm in somewhere in Metrona County, but then they didn't, wouldn't tell me where, but wanted to know if we had regs, and I told her that, that we had them and looked under the thing. Did you ever get any calls or anything about another possible solar farm?
Since Dynosolar, the development department has received multiple calls about several different solar, utility scale solar installations that are either in the mill, being worked on, and ultimately, we hope, would get to us. But we've got, received several calls.
Okay, so that means we need the fee scheduled pretty quick, then, so they know what they're talking about, too. Okay, other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to pass TA 20 dash one, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. We have, we have a solar farm reg, okay, that was ours.
Yeah.
Okay, we're down to the time for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the Commission?
Tracy Lamont, 1955 Crimson Dawn Road. I was already in town, so I figured I better come by and give the atta boys, here and atta girls today on it. So the good news, I was out for a little drive to Pond Rose Park last Wednesday, and lo and behold, there was much of prefabricated roof joists and the walls, and Mike Hagler shared with me a picture today that they've all been welded together. And he was, he was on top of it as usual. On it, had the fire department out there while they were welding, just to minimize the risk, because there's, there's potential there like you wouldn't believe. But he's, they haven't finished up, but he's going to come up with a CM2 truck, I think, to put out there in the interim period, so they can finish that project. So the good news is, that's progress. So the other thing is, it's kind of nice to see that temporary patches on all the shelters up there on the roof. So I don't know who did that, have you contracted it, but it's done. Um, so we're moving forward on them. And the, the other is, I, I'd like to just comment on, I, I put a quick yes or no survey out on our Mountain Landowners Association Facebook site, and it had over 1,300 views out of the active members, and not one of them came back. And I, I asked the question, should or shouldn't a total fire ban be put in place like the Wyoming game and fish has done at their properties around the state with an ultimate fire ban? I mean, nothing at all. On it, and we, we've had over, I think we've had approximately 40 people come back and says, yes, institute the complete fire ban. And we had almost an equal amount of 40 that pushed the like button, which I would have to read as a yes. So that's 80 people that took the time, but they also had the opportunity to put no. And to give you a comparison, I did basically kind of a similar thing last year, and there were several no's that came back. And this year, it's been so dry, and we've already seen the warnings. But I would encourage that we go ahead and get that done on it, and rather than we end up in a situation where we have to tell ourselves, we, we told ourselves. So I, I don't think it's that big a deal. On, if the game and fish can do it, I think we can do it. And the county doesn't need to be picking up the tab for another Pedro Mountain fire, like, that had to be a pretty good price tag last year. I don't know how you guys came out on that deal. On it, the good one, I felt real comfortable today in that meeting, with, particularly with the architect that was chosen to review the, the trails center lodge. And I'd, I'd like to go on record, again, that's a multi-purpose facility. That's just not just an Arctic Lodge. I don't want to get involved in the history of that, but that, that became the community rallying point. I've brought that up to you guys before. So as we go moving forward, I don't want to discourage that kitchen. Mike's not wanting a kitchen in there at all. On it, but in order to, to have a good multi-purpose building, it's no different than a forage building or anything else, you know, that has, and these other communities on it. But it's, it's a good deal, and I think you'll regret not putting that in there as a replacement. If we're going to keep the kitchen material, there's going to have to be a place to go for it anyway. On, so I'd like to encourage that. But, and then, of course, the structural engineer you hired, I, I've got the utmost respect for both of those guys. So I, I told after the meeting, I, I got those two guys hooked up with a reporter from All City News, because he got tied up following Keating out and missed all the discussion on that. So I would strongly encourage, Eric did a fantastic job of the narrative on the justification, either which direction you guys were going to choose to go on it. And if we can get him hooked up with this reporter from All City afterwards, and I know, Brooke, you've had your finger in there pretty heavily, too, which is a good deal. On it, and, you know, come up with a solid press release justifying, you know, detail justifying why the decision was made, and that's going to kill a whole bunch of negativity. And I, I won't, personally, I'm not going to put anything on our Landowners Association until there's a new story written, most out by All City. He does a good little job and does his due diligence of digging in and getting, getting information. So, and I see he's sitting in the back of the room here. So anyway, and I touched base with Eric about that, and I think you guys have already had some discussion along those lines, is when the shell shock sets in, when that building starts to get tore down, if we can minimize that and move forward with what your plans are. And I didn't get a chance to go through page by page with Mike on the defects of that building. We're lucky it didn't fall. On, on the north side gable, it's moved out five inches. And I don't think any of the columns, the four columns holding the gables up were ever put on piers that went down to frost level. I think they just poured them right on top of the cement slab. So it's, you know, it's Godsend that, that it, it never collapsed before this point in time. On, I think, whatever new building we come up with, the question is, who in the world is going to take care of it? You know, any buildings we have up there, we find ourselves in the dilemma we did with Crimson Dawn, the caretaker's facility and, and the shelters, and, and then this building here. Granted, there was some design defects, but I think if we would have stayed on top of the roof maintenance, which we tried, back when Dick O'Hearn was still here, I think there was a $10,000 or $15,000 job that was led to, to correct part of that problem on them. But, you know, just put a Band-Aid on it, and we are where we are right now. So I think, just to wrap up and close, no matter what direction we go, we, we need to replace what we had. And I told the architect, let's go with something nostalgic and rustic as far as a theme, and, you know, trying to stay along that particular line. I don't think we want to get too artistic up on that mountain top with, you know, with just with the romance and, and aesthetic aesthetics that have always been there on those timber type buildings on it. But you, you can, with a metal building like Mike's kicking around, Rob, you and I both know that those are pretty economically priced, just the framing and what have you. By the way, come up with the right roof structure this time, and it needs a little steeper slope than the county shop has up there. A little bit so that snow slide. But if you do that, then you can add some nice amenities to the outside with this rusty type of siding that, that weathers with time. In fact, there's a barn at the base of the mountain that is built with that type of material, and the older it gets, the more that it seems to blend in on them. So I, that, and I liked, I really liked what I heard with, with what Jim said. You're trying to come up with, with a theme to follow, you know, with the buildings from this point forward. So with that, oh, the, you might look at the, on your temporary building, you can probably rent one of those facilities. And then, once you're done with it, you can turn it back to them. You know, depending upon what their economics are with that, I'm sure you'll find a use for it, even if you want to head and purchase it. But that may save you some other additional money you can put back into the building. On, so I think that's all I had. Did I get done under five minutes?
You were close.
All right. Honestly, I had one, not one negative thing, did I?
No, no.
Forrest, we're going to miss you.
And your name was?
What's that? I miss that. Forrest, we're going to miss you, buddy. You're a short-timer at this point. Congratulations to those that made it through the primary here. And I see Terry, he, he slipped in here on the Democratic side, so we still got a race. So we'll, we'll see where it ends up and have a good party on November, huh?
Okay.
Talk to you later.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, Commissioners' comment. Commissioner Mill?
Nothing. Thank you.
Commissioner Bertolino?
Thank you. Speechless.
Speechless. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Chadwick?
You know, I just wanted to thank our, our county clerk and her department for all their hard work that they did on the primary election. You know, the average person doesn't see what goes on and how challenging that can be. And a big thank you to Michelle as part of that department and, and all the work that got created but for her, not only by the election, but by the, all the appeals that the BOE is going to have to hear here in a couple of months. And just want to thank you guys for all your hard work. Thank you.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Forrest stole my thunder. So I was going to say thank you to you, and I also just to all the employees. It's been an amazing year at the county, and we were just reminiscing a little bit as we were getting ready to come up here, all the things that we've been through this year with COVID and Wyoming Medical Center, and then obviously the election. And it, like, we have great staff, and I'm really happy that I get to be a part of it. So thank you for all your work. Thank you, Jason, for all yours, too, and just to all the staff. Everybody's doing their part and doing a great job. So, thank you.
Great. Well, thank you. And, and you saved one for me. Thank you, Eric, for everything you've done on the last, in the last year and a half, and beyond that. But, boy, it's been busy. And all the staff, I would agree, that's been really above and beyond. And we lived through this COVID damn thing. We'll be on a roll. But thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. And then Tracy mentioned the fire ban. It might not be bad to look into that. I got a call the other day from the Medicine Bow Route Forest, and they initiated the other day. And, you know, there's some justification there. It's getting cooler this last week, but then next week may be warm again. So falls in the air, but it's still no moisture at all. We had 10 drops west of town the other night is all. And, and so it might not be bad to get that going. Other than that, I have nothing. Meeting adjourned.